Once y'all got something out of there. Ain't nothing bad.
Oh, yeah, it was real good.
Okay. Glad you all was ready for ten.
Nineteen is, uh, yeah, they're ready to, they're ready to come add you about a hundred questions.
Just get the buzz. Now come down and talk to me.
They're talking about having, uh, like talking to Ray. And, uh, just come take a look at everything.
Good morning. I'd like to call the special call eight fifteen meeting in order, please. Do not have any public participation. Um, so we'll move on to item number three.
And with that being said, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask Ms. Erica Robinson, our executive financial manager, to walk us through a presentation regarding, um, our milage rate.
It feels extra dark today. No, 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 you're fine, I'm just...
You wanna come over there?
No.
Is it gonna get lighter? Is it? Okay. Oh, okay. Good, yeah, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So this morning, um, I have a short presentation on the, um, proposed milage rate for FY twenty. And so first, we'll start out, um, as we always do, by looking at the, um, MNO Tax Digest history. Um, here on the screen, we have twelve years of history. Um, all of these are the actual Tax Digest numbers. Um, and you can see the milage rates associated with each year there and the gross revenue, um, that was generated. Um, so for this year, down at the bottom, you see there's two lines for, um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And I want to explain why there's two lines there. There, there are two lines because there's two different milage rates there. The first one is twenty milage rate, uh, twenty mils, and the second one is nineteen point seven eight eight. So, back in late May, uh, we received an email, I, I call it a surprise email, because no one knew it was coming. Um, but we received an email from the state telling us that we were going to have a state health benefit holiday. And what that meant was, we would not pay the employer portion of health insurance for the month of June. So, those were expenses that we had already budgeted for to pay, um, and so we did not have to pay that money. Um, for the general fund, that amounted to about six hundred thousand dollars that we did not have to pay, um, for the month of June. Um, so in essence, it will mean we have a surplus, um, for FY nineteen. So, this milage rate of nineteen point seven eight eight, um, would lower, lower the tax revenue that's generated for the coming year by about six hundred thousand dollars. So, if we were to set the milage rate at the nineteen point seven eight eight, we would, in essence, be, um, passing along the savings that we received when we didn't have to pay the state health, uh, we would be passing along that savings, in essence, to the community. So that's why there's two lines down there, um, and those are the two options that we're looking at. Either a, a milage rate of twenty or a milage rate of nineteen point seven eight eight. And so you see there, the revenue that it would generate, um, for each one.
And just to point out, the first column, the tax digest, the revenue, it has still not recovered all the way to the two thousand and, um, nine, um, tax digest. It's getting there, it's just, we're not, we're not there just yet.
Yes, that is correct. Um, the tax digest is still lower, um, today, um, versus the amount that it was in two thousand and nine. And it's, it's still lower by about one hundred twenty-eight million dollars. And so the digest is what generates the revenue. So next, we have, um, a, a sample teacher salary and benefits. And what this slide shows is, um, for a teacher that is on a T-four salary schedule at ten years of experience, um, it shows their salary and benefits in two thousand and nine, uh, versus starting in two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty. So in two thousand and twenty, you can see that, um, overall, we are up, um, by a little bit over four thousand dollars, and that is due to, um, the, the increases to the state salary schedule that were approved at the state level, as well as, um, the increases that have been approved by the board, um, over the years. Um, our 403B is, is now at five point five percent. Um, uh, pre-recession, it was at five percent. So we have been able to, um, increase our 403B, um, to a level that is greater than it was in two thousand and nine. I'm sorry. Okay, so on this slide, um, it shows the impact of, um, the milage rate that you set. It shows the impact, um, on revenue. So, um, the top number is twenty mils, which is where we're at, are at now. Um, the nineteen point seven eight eight is, you know, the, the milage rate that we could, um, roll back to. And then nineteen is just, um, a middle number there. Eighteen point seven zero eight is, is the rollback rate, um, from the Tax Commissioner's Office. And then the eighteen point two one is the milage rate that was set in two thousand and nine. So all of those different mi- milage rates, you can see the revenue that will be generated from those milage rate numbers. Um, the, the value of a mil will not change, um, based on that milage rate, it will remain the same. Um, so will the local fair share, which is five mils. So, um, another important thing to remember, on this slide, it says total gross revenue. So that is the gross revenue. Um, you do have to consider that we have a collection fee, um, that comes out of that number, which is two point five percent. Um, and then we also have to estimate for, um, uncollectibles or delinquent taxes, which we use one percent for that. On this slide, we show the, um, per pupil expenditures, um, for FY eighteen, which is the latest data available. Um, Newton is at the top, just so that you can see it easily. Um, but if you were to put them in rank order, Newton would fall, uh, between Jasper and Henry County. Now, this is all of our expenditures, um, that we, that we made in FY eighteen with state, federal, and local dollars. So the counties that are listed here are either our surrounding counties, or they're similar to us in FTE count. So that's why that, these counties were, um, chosen. And this order is the same as it was, um, in last year's, in, in FY seventeen, it's the same order. Everybody did increase, but we increased all at the same rate. So this slide shows our per pupil, um, FTE for total local revenue. Now, remember on the last slide, it, it was expenditures for state, federal, and local. On this slide, this just takes into account local revenue. So our per pupil FTE for local revenue is just under twenty-seven hundred dollars, um, for FY eighteen. And so the counties on the left are the same counties that were on the previous slide. Um, and, and Newton would be down, um, at the bottom. And then the counties on the right are just additional counties, um, that we compared ourselves to. And again, we would be, um, at the bottom on that side as well. And then just to show a, a twenty-year average of the per pupil local revenue from Newton, the twenty-year average is, um, just over twenty-three hundred dollars. And for FY eighteen, that is about, um, three hundred forty-five dollars greater, um, for FY eighteen than the average. Um, this slide does, does follow the trend that you see, that you saw on the twelve-year history, um, as far as the increases and the decreases. You can see that, um, the highest years were, um, two thousand six, seven, eight, nine, and then we started to decrease. And then, um, we are starting to increase again, um, as the tax digest continues to improve. Here is a list of the milage rates for FY nineteen, which is the year that just ended, um, June thirtieth. Um, and the, and these are select counties, um, and their milage rates, um, that they set for FY nineteen. Um, some of the counties did lower their milage rates, some of the counties did not lower their milage rates for the year that just ended. Um, so we were at twenty mils, um, tied with Clark County, who is also at twenty mils. And on this last slide, um, I'd just like to leave you with this calculation. Um, it's, it's an average sample home, um, based on an average price of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, and this is the, the amount, um, that the Tax Commissioner's Office, um, provides. So, the average home, they say, is one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So on the left-hand side, the calculation is based on twenty mils. So at twenty mils, a, a homeowner would pay approximately thirteen hundred twenty dollars. On the right-hand side, the calculation is based on nineteen point seven eight eight mils. And at that rate, the homeowner would pay thirteen hundred and six dollars, which is a decrease of, of, there's a difference there of fourteen dollars between the two milage rates. So these are the, the options that, that we are looking at and, and proposing. And, um, if you have any questions, um, I can take them now.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Okay. And would you go back to one slide before you guys turn the light on?
Hold on, hold on. Which one?
Slide one.
Oh, oh, you want a slide too? You can go to Mr. Johnson's slide first.
I think it's slide one. I'm trying to find this, the six hundred thousand dollars, it's nineteen and twenty, right?
Yeah.
And the gross taxes?
Yes, so the gross taxes, the difference between those two, the two numbers at the bottom is, I think it's like five ninety-nine, something. It's very close to six hundred thousand.
I, I see, um, at the proposals that you have, you have put forward. I would like to see us consider taking that, that, those funds, at least a part of them, and put it in, yeah, employees' 403B account. We have robbed them of their basic retirement for about six or seven years. And I think we owe that back to them, and put it in, and not bother the milage rate for this year. I, I think we owe that to them. We, we, we always, we did preach, when we get prepared, that we will replenish it, or replace it, or fill it back. So I think the options are not fulfilling what we promised in many of our conversations with the public, with our employees doing. That's my, uh, proposal, how we would, uh, deal with the extra. And we're talking fourteen dollars per household. Either do that, or chime in and refund, those are over sixty-five.
So, we, we, we are definitely, um, oh, you know, working on the, well, the 403B, you, you have met and exceeded, and you are absolutely correct. All those years that the contributions were not where they needed to be, it'll be awfully hard, um, to, to recapture those losses, um, simply because they, they compounded with the economy and the, the, um, the market. But at the end of the day, what we, what we're showing the board is, and, and the community, is that these were unbudgeted funds, and that they're, that you, as board members, have options to determine whether or not you want to return those funds to, to, to our taxpayers with a lower milage rate, um, that, that you may not be able to, to keep at a lower milage rate for more than a year, um, because those are one-time funds that we received in, in June. Um, and, or you can leave it at twenty mils, and then you have those dollars to allocate to, to something else. So you're absolutely right, Mr. Johnson. But we wanted to present to the board, um, an option, options for, for you to think about and choose. We don't have to decide today. Um, these are just two, two hearings this morning, and then this afternoon. And then the decision can be made on what you wish to do at the July thirtieth special call meeting, where you'll hear this presentation one more time at six thirty, and then make the determination. Um, it is a good faith effort on the part of the school system, um, to, to remind our community that the school system staff, um, really do listen and then pay close attention to our bottom line, um, and that the, the board is, is with us in that as well. Looking at, um, when we have opportunities to, to, um, make those kinds of changes, um, we're willing, we're willing to do it, um, although you may not be able to sustain that. Not unlike the, uh, that six hundred thousand dollars roughly, um, i- if you add it to the 403B, you will have to be able to sustain that in the long run. So it's not like you can just spend those funds one time in that area. You'll have to plan for that, um, increase over the, over the coming years, if that's what you so choose to do. But it would, we felt like it was best option to give you the option to make the decision on, on what you wish to do.
Excuse me. Are you saying we, it would be a one-time charge?
Yeah.
To the 401.3?
Yeah.
You can't continue it over a period of time. Well, that's okay.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we, we just robbed our teachers over a long period of time.
Yeah.
And we replenish it, and thank you one, and forget it. The other one is that, I'm sure Dr. Boar would have got many rooftops that he would like to complete and repair in addition to his SPOS budget.
Absolutely.
And now's the time, uh, to do that. And we have, uh, some expenses that we're going to incur in our building of, uh, East Side. And I just don't think we're in a position, I know it's encouraging to talk about it, but I just don't think we're in a position financially to start messing around with the milage rate, because we can use that money internally. We may be able to go back and advance our booked schedule replacement, and, uh, get rid of our favorite, I can't think of the name of it now.
We got, well, that's already done.
Well...
So...
Go deeper.
Yeah.
Go, advance the next...
We're working on it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, now's the time to do that.
I, I, I understand completely. Um, I do want to offer a point of clarification, however. Um, the 403B account, we are one of the very few systems across the state that offer a 403B account. Many, many of them do not. They, um, they have, they don't have any type of retirement account that's in addition to the state retirement. So, the idea that, um, it, we, we used the word robbed, we, we didn't, we were, we were in a bad financial situation. I think you made, as a board, the best decisions that you could at the time. And I think the converse of that is, you have been working diligently to restore those funds. So I, I don't want anybody to think that, that the board, at the time when those decisions were made, or you all had to make those kinds of choices back then.
Could you remind us of the, when that, uh, oh nine, whenever that change happened, um, and the employer contribution percentage went down to zero, I believe it was, wh- where is it back to now?
Yes, so it never went to zero, it only, it went to a half a percent. But we, we, we also allowed the employees also to drop their contributions to a level of one percent, which, we're gonna have to talk about that, uh, moving forward. But, so that happened, um, pretty quickly when the recession started. So by two thousand and ten, and eleven, we were down to a half a percent. Um, since then, you have restored it half a percent, or a percent, or a percent and a half, to now you are exceeding pre-recession contributions at five point five percent.
I thought so, that's good.
Yes, and so, what Mr. Johnson's proposal would do, would roughly pay for a half of a year, because, uh, and Erica, you correct me if I'm off-base, but I believe a, a year contribution to the 403B is about...
One point three, one point two.
One point two million dollars. So, you, you would have to then budget, um, the, you, you would have to do like a half, a quarter of a percent, and, and then leave it that way, and then budget the remaining, and then try to carry it for, forward. Um, but Mr. Johnson also made some other good points. You know, there, that six hundred thousand dollars could be, um, allocated to the SPOS budget, and then accelerate some of our, um, maintenance projects. It's, it's just a matter of, of what, what you, what you want to do. But we wanted to present you with, with options to consider, because, you know, we certainly can use those funds to, to advance some of the projects that we're working on, no doubt about it. But at the same time, um, Geneva will tell you, Sherry will tell you, we'll tell you, lots of people have come through the store, um, complaining about their elevated taxes, many, much more than in the past. We've seen, um, quite a few of them. As a matter of fact, I had a conversation last night, um, and am going to visit a taxpayer next week to have a conversation with the taxpayer, um, who, who is seeking relief from paying taxes. And so, we're just trying to, eh, eh, you know, exercise, um, a good faith effort on the part of the administration, and then give the board the choice to do what they feel is most appropriate. And we'll take action from there.
I think, uh, just from, from my perspective, and this is that fine line of trying to represent, um, my district, and then represent all of what's best for the, the kids of Newton County, the students of Newton County. This is one of those difficult ones for me, because I know, I mean, it, as, as property values go up and revenue comes in, and we, we could use that, man, we, several buildings need repair, and things need to be torn down, and... So I, I get all that, but, uh, to fully represent my district, I would say that this has probably been, this definitely in the, the last four years, this has been the, the year I've heard the most about property taxes. Now, that's because values are going up, and that's a good thing for our community, but it means they're paying more taxes as well. Um, that, uh, that value to them is not realized until they sell the property or do something with it. So they're still paying more in their taxes. So to, this is a, this is not just a good faith effort, this is a great option to at least see the milage rate decrease. So I appreciate you guys putting forth that. Um, looking at some of the other counties, I mean, I, I'm a proponent of even being more aggressive, looking at what nineteen would look like, or nineteen point five would look like. It looked like we'd still have, um, a tax increase according to the digest. Um, so it's, I think it's something worth looking into. We can always come back and add it if we need to, but we can't go over twenty. So, to me, to, to take this, to adva- take advantage of the health insurance holiday, pass that savings back to the taxpayers, I think is, is wisdom and good stewardship, um, knowing that we can come back and add it if we have to. So I appreciate the op- the options, and I know my district will.
Thank you.
Okay, my last thing is actually, um, kind of related to what you said, Mrs. Fury, and, um, what Trey said, Mr. Bailey. If you could go to the, next to the last slide, that has surrounding areas for the fiscal year nineteen, because I had a number of phone calls, so I would like to be able to provide, I just want to take a quick picture of this slide, so that I can send this to all of us people, thank you. That's the only thing I needed. Because many people did talk about, like, I had more phone calls than I normally have, related to, um, the milage rate, so...
And people in surrounding counties too, like, or at least our people, our community will forget that we, we have a zero bond...
Right.
Right now. And many of those, like, I was looking at Fayette thinking, that's about where we, we are. I, I feel like we're trending towards the Fayette, uh, anyway. And they're at nineteen point five, and I thought, that looks really good. And then I saw, oh, they got a one point three five bond milage rate, so that puts them over the twenty as well.
I, I think it, as a, as a superintendent and member of the community, it would, we are hard-pressed to, to, in the, as community members, say that the system and the board has not been good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. I mean, that's pretty evident. And so, um, just having four, I mean, we're talking ten years now. Um, you know, but having this conversation, I don't, I didn't feel comfortable, and I'm not sure I would feel the same way I feel right now had we not had that June holiday. Um, I found that to be an opportunity, um, to, to extend, even albeit a small one, um, the, to the community that it, we are at least considering, because we are hearing from them, um, options that will keep our district moving forward, um, not necessarily at the rate that Mr. Johnson is proposing, um, but certainly, um, moving in the right direction. And, and you are very right, we may have to come back around at the end of, um, next, the next fiscal year, and, and move the, the, the milage rate back to twenty mils. We, no telling what will happen between now and then, so...
With that said, why would we tamper with it?
Just for the, just for the reasons I described. We, we didn't budget it, and, and, um, it's just a, we've heard a lot of complaints and frustration, and we, we had the opportunity to, to share with the community that we did receive this one-time, um, holiday, and this is a way, a way, that you can address it, whether you choose to or not. At least you have the information available to you to make that decision.
I'd like to say that, uh, I commend everybody who worked on the budget, I think you did an excellent job, uh, number one. And number two, is that I think we've done our due diligence in trying to make sure that we did things to our teachers and administrators, and trying to get them back. As all of you know, we've had a number of people that was concerned about the taxes. And we would always tell them, which was the truth, that if we found a time that we could do it, we'd be more than happy. But right now, our finances would not allow us to do it. So now's an opportunity for us to keep our word and be able to give them some relief on their taxes. So I don't have a problem with the, uh, with the milage rates being dropped to give some relief to the taxpayers.
With all due respect, Mr. Turner, I, I applaud your comments, but I have an obligation also. One, when we were dealing with this issue, how were we going to avoid, uh, depleting our, our teachers' ranks? And what do we do to recover or to get revenue to sustain our employment, to sustain? We did what a lot of, uh, counties didn't do. We didn't suffer as bad, because we took funds from the 401.3. And I was part of that discussion, saying, whenever we get funds, that we'll replenish what we've taken from you. Now's the time to live up to that commitment and abide by it. I totally agree. I'm a taxpayer also. Pay too much taxes. But I cannot let the increase, uh, 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 this opportunity to pass by and not to give a significant portion of it to our employees. They are, when they retire, they're gonna be below the poverty line on their retirement, because of one of the things that we have done here, is not the time to abandon our employees.
I think it was a, a little bit of hyperbole. I, I think you're right, you, you made some promises...
You think I'm right.
No, well, you made, you made some promises, you're, you want to fulfill those promises, and I, I just want to say, we, we have been, by increasing that percentage that the employer pays, we have been, been kind of chipping away at it. Maybe it's not in a lump sum, like you're saying. And some will have missed out on that, right? Some that have already retired from six years ago are gonna miss some of those, whatever we could do now. Um, but just to clarify, they would not, they will not, uh, retire below the poverty line at the current rate, they will not. Um, and if, if the, the T-four, right now at ten years, I think that's the slide you showed, right? We're up almost five thousand from where we were ten years ago, or, uh, yeah, ten years ago. So we're up almost five thousand, that's a net gain. That's, that, that's very positive, and it's not poverty, not the poverty line at a teacher retirement with where we're at right now.
Well, all you have to do, Mr. Bailey, is sit in the front of some of your current teachers who... who plan retirement, and sit in front of the group that have retired and can tell you what happened to their retirement.
Yeah.
That's all you got to do.
I just sat with the person. I have a teacher, my wife's a teacher. We, we're in the, the years where we're looking at it right now, trying to figure out, how do we keep, you know, how does she retire in six years and still afford to live? And, and it's not, I'm just saying it's not poverty line. You're right, it's not, we're not moving to, to another city and buying a mansion anywhere. We're going to scale down probably, but it's not, I just wanted to clarify, it's not poverty line. Because I agree with your sentiments. I just wanted to, I didn't want us to put out something that might be false information.
Well, I, I, I'm not saying anything, not to my knowledge, saying anything false.
Okay.
I was sitting in this seat, and that one over there, one, every year, when I made this book. And I, I, and I have feel it hot that we owe this to them.
Okay. I think that ends the discussion.
You're welcome.
Any other matters of interest? The one have any?
Excuse me, question for the bill. My concerns, expression as to how we should deal with it. Would that be brought forward in meetings going forward? Or I would have to be here and do the same thing again. If I have to do it twice, it's going to be twice as bad.
I mean, we can, we can break it up. First of all, the meet, this meeting is recorded, so anybody who chooses to, who is not here this morning, who chooses to watch it, will be able to do so. And then we'll have, you'll be here this evening. And I, I guess we can break it up again and, and talk about it again, if you wish. But don't make it twice as tough. Just once, once is tough, that's good enough. We got it. And we'll, we'll be able to, I mean, we can, we hear you as an administration. I mean, these are the things that we talk about too. But we're trying to balance all of the pieces and put, present options to the five of you so that you can negotiate with your constituents and, and express the sentiment that we are good stewards of the taxpayer dollars and that we work hard to try to remain competitive when it recup, when it comes to the, to our millage rate.
That's the key word, taxpayer dollars. Unfortunately, every taxpayer is not a school system employee. So you have to keep the good faith of the taxpayers, who are the overwhelming majority in the community. Okay. Other matters of interest?
Is that a director?
I'm just saying, you have an overwhelming majority that contribute, and then you have a minority involved in it. And so you always have to consider the overwhelming majority. The overwhelming majority are the ones that are coming forward and speaking out.
Baby, while I'm saying that, what you're saying is not totally, I, I'm representing a silent minority.
Okay, that's fine. I have one of those minorities in my household too. So that, that's perfectly fine, Mr. Johnson, and I understand that. But that is my fault, in my opinion.
I respect it.
Other matters of interest?
Just that we'll have another hearing this evening at 5:30.
What, can I ask a question that's not pertaining to taxes? Or this is strictly taxes?
This is a millage rate hearing. So we're strictly, now you are convened as a board. So you definitely can probably ask any kind of questions you want.
You sound without doubt.
Okay, having none, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, been moved to second, all in favor? Thank you. Meeting adjourned, 8:48.
Thank you.